After the tone, please state your name, followed by the pound sign. You will now be placed into the conference. Jennifer.
Do you want to see Akumalik?
Roll mine. Afternoon, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Sheila Flaherty.
Counselor Shepherd. All right, everyone, start with a vote call. Counselor Natac, are you there?
Yep.
Thank you. Counselor Shepherd, I heard you. Counselor Lucasy, are you there? I don't believe she's coming today. Um, Counselor Awah? Counselor Flaherty?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Stevenson?
Yep, I'm present.
Deputy Mayor Brewster?
I'm here.
Thank you very much. Amy, and interpretation, are you guys all ready to roll?
We're ready, uh, on this end, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome to City Council Meeting Number 16. Um, the public hearing that is on the agenda today has been canceled, and it will be, uh, on the ninth of June, I believe. Um, but that will be confirmed later. We'll start the meeting with a moment of silence after interpretation.
End of translation.
All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, can I get a, um, agenda, adoption of the agenda, please?
Akumalik. Stevenson, second.
Akumalik, move, Stevenson, seconds. Any comments, questions, concerns?
Akumalik, big heart to see you, IP, Stevenson, after what you have said, end of translation.
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Counselor, uh, Natac?
I am.
In favor.
Counselor, Counselor Shepherd?
In favor.
Counselor Flaherty?
In favor.
Uh, Counselor Akumalik?
In favor.
And sorry, Counselor Akumalik, I didn't call you for the old call there, sorry about that. Uh, Counselor Stevenson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Brewster?
In favor.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. We'll move right into, um, minutes, City Council Meeting Minutes Number 12, dated April 28th, 2020. Can I get a mover and a second there, please, after interpretation?
End of translation.
Stevenson moves.
I have a second.
Time is seconded, thank you very much. Any comments, questions, concerns about that motion?
Stevenson, big heart to see you, Natac, IP, after what you have said, end of translation.
Seeing none, uh, Counselor Flaherty, how do you vote?
In favor, Mayor.
Counselor Akumalik?
In favor.
Counselor Stevenson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Brewster?
In favor.
Counselor Shepherd?
In favor.
And Counselor Natac?
I am.
Thank you.
In favor.
Moving on to B, City Council Meeting Minutes Number 14, dated May 12th, 2020. Uh, can I get a mover and a second there after interpretation, please?
End of translation.
Stevenson moves. Do we have a second there?
Flaherty will second.
Counselor Flaherty, second. Uh, any comments, questions, concerns about the motion?
Stevenson, big heart to see you, Flaherty, IP, after what you have said, end of translation.
Seeing none, Counselor Shepherd, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Natac, how do you vote?
I am, I am.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brewster?
In favor.
Counselor Stevenson?
In favor.
Counselor Akumalik?
I'm in favor.
And Counselor Flaherty?
In favor.
Thank you. An anonymous vote. Moving on to C, Public Hearing Minutes 01, dated May 12th, 2020. Can I get a mover and a second there after interpretation?
The conference has ended. You will now be disconnected. Thank you. The moderator has not yet joined the conference. If you are the moderator, please press star now. The moderator has not yet joined the conference. Please stand by. After the tone, please state your name, followed by the pound sign. You will now be placed into the conference.
Sorry about that, everybody. Is everyone back? Do you want to see? Back. Stevenson is back. Shepherd's back.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering if Sergeant Garfield is on the line.
I'm not sure, and I, and I don't hear if Natac's back yet.
Staff Elliott is back.
Perfect, thank you. Is Counselor Natac back yet? Okay, let's just continue on. He'll, he'll, uh, he'll make it back. Um, I was at the public hearing, Minutes 01, dated May 12th, 2020. Uh, can I get a mover and a second there for that, please?
May 12th, 2020, big heart to tell them, Stevenson, big heart to see you.
Did I hear a second there? Shepherd? Shepherd, Counselor Shepherd, thank you. Uh, can I get, uh, any comments, questions, concerns about that motion?
Stevenson, big heart to see you, Shepherd, IP, never allow me to.
Thank you, sorry about that. Counselor Shepherd, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Flaherty, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Akumalik, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Alaman?
Hello.
Counselor Stevenson, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor, uh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Brewster, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Uh, welcome, Counselor, um, Awah. We are just passing the minutes for public hearing. Um, Minutes 01, dated May 12th, 2020. Did you have any, do you, how do you vote on that?
Um, I'm good. I vote, sorry, I, I have problem with connecting.
No, no worries. Uh, okay, we're moved, perfect, so that was passed. Moving on to, uh, DE, Planning and Development Committee of the Hall, Minutes 03, dated May 19th, 2020. Can I get a mover and a second there after interpretation, please?
May 19th, big heart to tell them, IP, you are lonely, look, end of translation.
Stevenson, move. Stevenson moves, Akumalik, seconds. Any comments, questions, concerns about that motion?
Stevenson, big heart to see you, Akumalik, IP, you, after what you have said.
Sorry, does someone have a comment?
Uh, just a quick comment, Mayor, if Flaherty here.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Flaherty.
Uh, it's S-H-E-I-L-A, timer.
Sorry, is your name spelled wrong in there somewhere?
Yes. It should be S-H-E-I-L-A.
Okay, but where is it?
On the, uh, the presence, um.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yep, thank you. Daniel will note that. Um, can I call for a vote after interpretation?
End of translation.
Thank you. Is Counselor Natac back? No, okay, Counselor Shepherd, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Awah?
In favor.
Counselor Flaherty?
In favor.
Counselor Akumalik?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Stevenson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Brewster?
In favor.
Perfect, thank you, everybody. Moving on to E, Special City Council Me- Meeting Minutes Number 15, dated May 20, 2020. Um, can I get a mover and a second there after interpretation, please?
End of translation.
Stevenson moves.
Awah, second.
Perfect, Counselor Stevenson moves, Counselor Awah, second. Um, any comments, questions, concerns about that motion?
Stevenson, big heart to see you, Awah, IP, you, after what you have said, end of translation.
Sorry, I was talking and my mic was muted. I'm gonna call for a vote now. Counselor Awah, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Shepherd, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Flaherty?
In favor.
Counselor Akumalik?
I'm in favor.
Counselor, uh, Stevenson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Brewster?
In favor.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome back, Counselor Natac.
Yeah.
End of translation.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on to, is, is there any declaration of interest?
End of translation.
Seeing none, move right into, um, delegations, and the Royal Canadian Mounted Police Report, uh, from Staff Sergeant Elliott. Uh, I believe you're here, Staff Sergeant.
Good afternoon, uh, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hello?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
I think I talked over you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, your worship, uh, and council members. Um, glad to, uh, be able to join, uh, today's meeting and, uh, present, uh, my report. Uh, normally a two-month report, but in this case, uh, the report will run January 1st to, uh, April 30th. Um, so, just wanna give you a bit of background on what we have been, uh, working on in respect of, uh, COVID-19. I, I did represent the RCMP, uh, initially, at the early planning stages. At that time, the initial concern for the city was, uh, potential of a diversion of an inbound aircraft coming from, uh, overseas, uh, uh, and having somebody onboard, uh, with symptoms and, uh, the pilot making an emergency landing here to deal with that. Uh, as the COVID-19 moved into, you know, uh, mid to late February, where it started to impact Canada, uh, our division, uh, Criminal Operations, uh, took over attending those meetings as it was a much larger concern for the, the territory and our city. In saying that, uh, locally, we do have, uh, a pandemic business continuity plan to ensure, it's in place to ensure that, uh, we maintain and retain enough, uh, resources to meet, uh, service delivery needs to the citizens of the Calhout within the city here. Uh, not, leave restrictions are in place across the country for the RCMP, and transfers of members, uh, uh, coming to Calhout and departing Calhout have been put on hold as we work through the pandemic. That allows us to, uh, maintain sufficient resources. Uh, we were able to practice some, uh, self-isolation, uh, to ensure that, uh, we were able to, uh, if somebody did become infected, that, you know, we weren't going to infect the whole detachment, uh, we could, uh, mitigate the, the risk to, of exposure to others and be able to continue, uh, operations. So, uh, some may have noticed, uh, that have called for service, uh,
Sorry, Staff Sergeant Elliott, uh, can we, uh, stop for interpretation, please, sorry?
Thank you. Beginning of translation. February. Taakua ta'au nuu kanga kitika laoktuu. Polisini tamanga tiki tiki guna ngikainaktuu. Pibiharun na kudlugu. Na amaktemi. Ngikana katiaruna kudlugu. Aituiyuman nginongon. Nuwakjuangna tamana aituiyunnangman. Teemaa nuu kanga kit- nuu kanga kitauka inakalauakidugun. Tamana siama runnangningano. Isimaluutigiyauklu ni mana nuu kanga kalauaktuu. Tiki guna ngikainaktuu. Tamanga nutteguma yuhi. Teemaa xilame uwi akusungu mataakagu gasehachi nukea. Mana go tamana nuu kanga yu. Amalo apa sitigu madlugu. Tamana kano ito hangi kala geha nginno. Ilaha no ngi tumi kudlugu. Teemata ga ukausugisima yanga mana pivaliatiaka na nganangang asinginning. End of translation.
Sorry about that, uh, Staff Sergeant Elliott, uh, Staff Sergeant Elliott, but, uh, we need to stop every once in a while for, uh, interpretation. Continue on.
Okay, and so, uh, calls, uh, from our, uh, our operations center are screening, uh, calls, uh, asking the appropriate, uh, questions to determine if, uh, uh, the potential we're at risk, uh, uh, calls for service, uh, due to COVID. Um, that helps our members then, uh, uh, better be prepared in responding and again, uh, in order to deal with somebody, then, you know, we can get the equipment, uh, on and, uh, and protect, uh, ourselves and, and other people and, uh, attending to those kind of calls. So those additional questions are being asked, uh, but, uh, in, uh, again, it's just sort of the safety of, of everyone. We have, uh, yeah, we're noted there since, uh, the pandemic, uh, hit and we've gone to, uh, isolation and, uh, mitigating, uh, exposure to, uh, within the community. That, uh, has been an increase in the presence of alcohol induced during our calls for service. And as I noted in the report, our long-term average, uh, at thirty-two months was at seventy-two percent of all calls are alcohol-related. And we noticed in March it, uh, increased to eighty-five percent and in April, uh, ninety-two percent. We've, uh, put a, a, a little bump in, uh, the illicit liquor that, uh, gets into the community. Uh, there's, uh, recently in a media release of, uh, a local, uh, bootlegger was identified and, uh, and charged and, uh, the quantity of liquor seized. Uh, work continues on that, uh, as we are moving, uh, forward as part of a strategy that trying to, uh, target and identify our bootleggers and, and keep up that pressure on, on that side of it. We can continue to work with our partner agencies and, and, uh, hoping to, you know, maintain, uh, uh, a resemblance of, uh, you know, seizures there that, you know, would impact that type of a business. Detachment, uh, has been supported by the GN for four new positions for this year. We don't have those positions, uh, filled, uh, due to the COVID, uh, all transfers being, uh, on hold, but, uh, our staffing, uh, members identified that we are looking good to, uh, lots of people have an interest to, uh, come to Nuneet and Iqaluit especially.
Translation. Beginning of translation. Taakua saakit- sakititi gu manngata siama kusuri gu manakidlo. Tamana ta'au djeru suksumayu hi mi alo pitahaliu misumayuk. Tamani akagu it, uh, uh, suhlo ta'utuplugu. Amalo ta'akiga say naasak tau simakata nuriyangin. Mi kinu say, um, pitahangi tok. Tamana hai March me eighty-five percent mi laoktuu. Anginu samariu laoktuu. Tei sumani di seventy-two percent mi lau. Amalo ta'au djeru na laumayu. Aikeli mi ninety-two percent mi lau. Luutidutau taakua. Mi alo ali guido. Mi aloi niu vaktau su. Tamana tuina pirayan nikut. Pitahaliu misumani. Ni kisi ani djeru suksumayu. Tamana, uh, kiku tuina. Pivaliayukuru ta'au laumata tusakaila umata taakua polisiku. Tigusi laumata tamakuninga pirayan nikut. Ni veta hatuunik. Amalo ta'au kauiyama kuyi yuhi. Siwuma na ngata tamana pirayan nikut. Tigusi ya kalta inalanga yuhi. Kaui tuaruti. Kiku mangata pirayan nikut. Ni veta hatuun. Tamana akepaliangin nachu gua mio. Pitaharoni talakudlugu. Aul- aula- aula duseri yangi teemana siwuma anginala ngayuhi. Aituanakakudlugu. Tamana mi kitli balu ta'ukudlugu. Nunavu gavamaku nginlu ti tamani. Tikwa akisimangmati. Ekana yaktitaun nangnyariyangi. Ilagyaanu ti polisiku. Kisi ani mana innuksimangin mata nuwakjuangna nineteen. Pitjutigilugu amalo ta'au kakama siwulakpa amitai sumani. Mana nuu kanga kalauumata. Ngikana yangin. Namutuina nunaliu yu. No abu garunniakusimangmati. Adla taakua taba. Tamana pitjutigilugu. Nuu kanga dutigiyanga. Innuktausimangin ningi. Ni kagalauakutiti tamani. End of translation.
That, uh, pretty much then sums up, uh, the written report and, uh, you'll notice, uh, we counted there for this report was, uh, a greater than or less than on, uh, final column of, uh, twenty twenty to April thirtieth. And what that is representing is on the bottom, if, uh, we projected those numbers through to the end of the year, it would be less than the previous year's total or greater than the previous year's totals. Just, uh, an explanation on that. Um, in, in reference, uh, to, you know, we do have, uh, you know, uh, a greater presence of, uh, alcohol, uh, present, uh, I'm sure once, uh, the restrictions get, uh, loosened up a little bit, people get to move about, get back out on the land, we'll see those numbers, uh, come back down to, uh, you know, that normalized percentage, even though that's high, but, uh, compared to what we're currently at, uh, that is, uh, unprecedented in my time here anyway in the last two years. As subject to any questions or concerns, uh, free to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Beginning of translation.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, the beginning of translation. End of translation.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, I know I've sent you personal messages of thank you, uh, uh, Staff Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Elliott for your, uh, staff, but I just wanted to make it on the record that, uh, you know, I know myself especially is very appreciative of the work you guys have been doing, uh, catching the bootlegger, the drug dealers, uh, the, you know, the accused murderer, um, off the streets and I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with that. And I'll open up the floor to, uh, councillors for questions.
Beginning of translation. End of translation.
Counselor Flaherty has a question? Oh, Counselor Flaherty, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, and, uh, thank you, Staff Sergeant Elliott, for your, uh, presentation and report. Um, as you highlighted, um, in your report, the long-term average over thirty-two months is, uh, for calls for service, uh, was at a, uh, average of seventy-two percent and now, uh, going into April, it jumped quite highly to ninety-two percent. Um, is there a way to know what kind of alcohol, uh, was consumed during these calls for service? Was it illicit alcohol or legal alcohol?
Uh, Counselor, in all respect, uh, the ability to, uh, identify each case, uh, of, uh, legal or illicit alcohol. There, there are not so many different calls. It, it's a mixture and that's, I, I can't give you a quantitative number to, uh, identify, um, one side or the other. It, it's a mixture of both.
Beginning of translation. End of translation.
Thank you. Uh, do you, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Akumalik.
Counselor Kumalik, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bell. Um, I'm not, I, I, I don't, I really don't need to get answer right away, but, um, uh, uh, it's something that I would like to know, uh, not now, but when, and if, and when you do have information, uh, the question is, um, how, uh, it, it's, it's almost related to, uh, Iqaluit as a community, but we do get a lot of, um, um, people who are sent out or banned from their communities and asked to, uh, uh, to, to go to Iqaluit. And, uh, I'm, I'm just wondering i- i- if that is something that, uh, our detachment can, uh, provide more information, uh, in the future, uh, if it's, uh, true that the communities, um, work with their local, uh, detachment and the Hamlet office, uh, if, when the community wishes to ban a certain, uh, person, um, and are sent to Iqaluit, uh, to stay. Um, I, I, I don't need answer right away, but I would like, uh, 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 some sort of a, uh, uh, answer in the future when you do have proper information. Thank you for the report.
Counselor, I'll just, uh, pass on, uh, I made notation of your request. Uh, I will do a bit of research to see if there is a potential that we would be able to, uh, identify or capture, uh, the concerns of that question and I will get back to you as that counsel.
Beginning of translation. End of translation.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Senator Nuttuck.
Counselor Nuttuck, go ahead.
The mayor. Okay. Beginning of translation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question I have is, um, similar to Counselor Akumalik's, uh, concern about the, um, influx of individuals who come outside of Iqaluit to stay here for unknown factors. However, as an individual councillor who also works at the local justice committee, we see a lot of people who have these problems and, um, one particular example is the, um, the, um, case that we had recently of Saniquilok, uh, residents who ended up having to be out in the community early as a result of, um, the matter before us with COVID nineteen. And we had to deal with that at the local justice committee and, and pondered about these, uh, problems that we are inundated with, uh, from residents who come here from outside of Iqaluit on top of our own regular cases. So I would like to see something where we can tackle this problem that we have from, from an influx of people who come here for various factors, ranging from people who get kicked out and so forth and, and problems within the justice system. And that's the end of the translation, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. You're welcome. I'll, uh, go to your concerns raised and, uh, we, uh, can follow up on that there aspect in reference to, uh, uh, the other questions that were posed and, uh, bring back to what a potential solution might be. It's, uh, it's outside of my ability. I, I can be a participant, but I can't make those rules.
... Then, uh, okay. Uh, that could all along again, um, you can't take it to enough, uh. Then, like, can you say it? Can you say, uh, huh, not that? Okay, she did, uh, 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 that, uh, 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 uh. Uh, she, uh, uh.
Emma.
Um, yeah, okay.
Beginning of translation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comment is, um, today, as I ponder about the, um, the daily life we're going through with COVID. However, as a hunter and many hunters in the community, we are looking forward to going out on the boat particularly, not just on the land. And we look forward to a report on the commencement of the, uh, work for the, um, the deep sea port and look forward to more development on that, although there are restrictions because of the COVID-19. But I look forward to any update on that and commend the workers that have been doing all the hard work up to today. End of translation.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilor Nuttuck. Uh, I actually have a phone call with one of the project managers, uh, later on today, uh, from the D.C. port, so I'll ask them about doing a public, uh, announcement for you.
Beginning of translation. Okay, let me, but he may, you know, that.
Apiri yuma kata'anga me yu'tau tamakua kamutau yenu'nu'akutiu tu'ikarbiu tu'hanu'ri tamakua two point eight meter isou'lu kaliga katu'ungu mata kamutini yangu nasugia'la namunga uyuyu'nu'ingi kayui. Kanu'ri ngasungu balu tamana siku'miga yanga mangalo maliga'anga. Ta na maliga'ala'ali ri ki'uyi ki'ugata'akto'k. Tamakua go so'ingi kayui. Ingikayui go tamana siku'mi'ingi mata ikatu'ina'anga ta so'lu atu'ya'mi'ingi mata kitiyani ikatu'ina'anga ta atu'ya'mi'. Taimana tagaki'ugata'akto'k siku'miga siku'miga yangi tu'ili pichu'ya'anga. End of translation.
Okay, thank you. Did we move Fairbell? Oh, are you back, Fairbell?
Yeah, sorry about that. My phone just did something weird.
I was about to step in for you. Go ahead.
Uh, is there any other comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, Councillor Nata.
Councillor Nata, go ahead.
Um, go ahead, Nami. Na pinna'ri mi'ukona'atukua ta na asewakte pi'una'atukama mata taku'ru'ne'ne'mate ingi kaya'nu'nu'ri. Amalu'ta'pani yu'nu'nu'chau'ri pi'ula'ni'atukama. Tita'kayu'ri mi'ingi ni'ka'ka'na'ka'ya'atukita'akua. Tamana inuksiu'tau'ngi ma ma na ukosu'ri ya'va' inuksiu'tau'zi na'atu'u'ra'asewakte'nu'. Kena'ku'te'ru'ru'akua asewakte. Tamana'ngi pi'una'atukitik atu'sou'mu'tu'kinu'ri ne'te'ak'alu'ra'nu'ri. Kena'sou'mu'ri ta'asimunga uyuyu'ri. Inukkaya'ha'ingi ni'ta'ana atu'ya'itik asewa'yu'ra'. Tamana taiman'la'ni'ak'pa'ukosu'ti'ya'nu'ri. Takakunua'ya'anginli'go. Sakitkenu'ri ya'balai'um. Kikuru'ne'itu'ki'yu'ma'te'nu'nu'ta'asimunga do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beginning of translation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Takku', I almost repeated in inuksiu'tau. My apologies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comment is regarding the hunters and that we've been talking about general provisions under eight that no person shall ride and no person shall permit a person to ride on the back outside of motor vehicle or on a trailer of any type. I feel that we need to look at this a little bit further because, um, we know that hunters have inherent rights recognized by the Canadian government under the Nunavut land claim and that maybe perhaps that we should research a bit on how the the city's bylaw will have to reflect, better reflect the hunters' rights as to how they can go about traveling between the city and to their, um, destination. Let's say, for example, to get to the causeway. So that we need to look at that a little bit further. So that I'm asking that we should consider that, um, furthering the comments that my fellow councillors had made regarding that section eight. End of translation.
Thank you, Councillor Nata. Um, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Councillor Stevenson has one.
Oh, and I'm sorry. I know Councillor Shepherd also has one. Uh, I'm gonna go with Councillor Shepherd first. Sorry, Councillor Stevenson, that was my bad. Councillor, uh, Shepherd, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have two, two issues. One is the use of the words publicly accessed throughout the document. There's no definition there, uh, particularly when it relates to abandoned vehicles and, and vehicle seizures. I, I'd like to have a definition of publicly accessed. The way we use land within the city, you know, there's not really a sense of private property. Um, you know, driveways are essentially publicly accessible. Parking lots of, uh, garages that work on vehicles are publicly accessible. So without a definition of, of what publicly accessed is, uh, I find there's a bit of a, a gap in the document there and I wonder if, if Rod can address that first.
Beginning of translation. Ta na katima'yi Shepherd mak'ni'atuk so'lu pidju'takalua'ku'yi yu'apiriya'apiriya'akto'k so'lu kikulima isu'tau'nu'na'ngi tita'kakutigita ilu'ani atu'aga ilu'ani'tok so'lu himata'utu'inasugu mata kikutu'ine nuna'siu'ti'ni'ni'ningi. Amalu'tau isu'tau'nu'ngi ningi ningi nuna nadli'ya'nu'ri. Kikutu'ina'unga ba obaluni kikutu'ina'unga ni'ba' pigiyi'au ba namminu'ri ya'ubaluni namminu'ri ya'ungilaluni. Tamana atu'ya'nu'ri kikulima'nu'ri isu'tau'nu'ngi tukisina'akitautia'kanu'ri'ali tukijina'laritsima'ngi mata tange'akati'aku'yi'ngi tu'ni'lu tita'kakata'ri'ya'ngi kikulima'nu'nyu'. End of translation.
Thank you, uh, Councillor Shepherd, for your question. Um, in respect to the publicly accessed, uh, basically the territorial act that this bylaw, uh, mirrors almost identically, um, they don't describe or give addition to publicly accessed area. Uh, we can definitely look into giving a broader definition, like including one. Uh, the issues that we have at hand in regards to publicly accessed would be like when vehicles are abandoned, uh, on, uh, you know, city, city-owned property, uh, like the beach area, um, as well as, uh, you know, QIA, uh, land, that's all publicly accessed. So we have run into a challenge when vehicles are dumped and they don't have a registration plate and then we have to locate the VIN number. But, uh, we definitely can have a look at finding a broad description of publicly accessed, um, when it comes to abandoned vehicles and registration and insurance requirements. Um, the act itself under the territorial legislation, um, kinda states that any, anywhere is publicly accessed, even, you know, private driveways and whatnot. The, the definition that they have under there makes it even become part of a roadway. So, um, I, I can look into, uh, a broader definition to incorporate into this bylaw.
Beginning of translation. Takku' kikulima'nu'ri isu'tau'nu'ngi tukisina'akitigia'uma'ya'anga takku' aditu'ina'ridlakta'anga aditu'inalakta'ri'angi tita'kakutigiyanga nuna'uka'uma'ku tita'kakutigiyanga maliga'ri'ya'ngi ilaa pichu'ya'tu'anga ita adidlakta'angi tita'kakari'ya'ngi amma kimi'ku'au'nu'ak'tok si'vituyu'nu'ksamik sou'lu tukisina'na'ksau'nu'aktu'ni ilu'ri'ya'ngi ningi tukitati'akanu'nu'akutlu'go sou'lu utu'takata'anga nuna'siu'ti himata'utu'ina'ak'tak'tu'isik'ya'mi sou'lu adla'ini nuna'akutigiyanga kikulima'nu' tamana isu'tau'nu'ngi mata amalu ilanik'uhimata'utu'ina'anga ta atili'ok'sima'ngi tu'ti na'sa'ksima'ningi ti'kutlu nuna'siu'ti naluna'ik'usutau'tia'sima'ngi ningi ningi naluni naluni'kuma'ak'ia'ngi ningi ningi lo tamakua'anga mata himata'utu'ina'nik'ongi nikitiyani u'ka'nu'ngi kikulima'nu'ri isu'tau'nu'ngi ningi ningi adla'akutigiyabu silata'ani tu'itilu'tu'atta silata'ani tia'tu'atu'ya'unga'yu tikitak'anga'yu kikulima'nu' isu'tau'nu'ngi mata. Tamana tukigi'ya' tukigi'ak'ui'ya'anga. End of translation.
Follow up, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I, I would prefer to see an inclusion of a definition of publicly accessed that excludes private driveways and private, um, you know, business parking lot. Well, not, not entirely, but, you know, specific areas like at, uh, motor vehicle garages and places like that. You know, even looking at the licensing, insurance and registration requirements. Section one, um, you know, you can't, you couldn't even have your car parked in your own driveway, uh, for any period of time with an, with an expired plate, basically. You could be ticketed in your own driveway even though you're not utilizing the vehicle while you used another vehicle to go register it. Uh, I just think the lack of defining public, publicly accessed and without excluding, you know, private property, uh, is a flaw in this and, and I'd really like to see that included in there.
Beginning of translation. Ta na tukitati'ak'ui'ya'anga so'lu namminu'ak'ati'ak'tu'atu'ya'anga ta silatitia'anga nitu'itama'na isu'tau'ku'ya'ungiluni baluni namminu'akutili'isu'tau'ak'tak'ui'ya'unga'ni so'lu nuna'siu'ti ku'imi'ni tu'ni'ukayui'utu naluna'ikutanga naluni'kuma'ni obaluni nuna'siu'ti'unga'yu'nu'ri silata'ani tu'iluni tamakua'galai naluna'ak'tak'ia'ri'ali so'lu utu'tigilugu tukitati'ari'ha'ningi ningi sangi'ulu'anga'ima tita'kakutigiyanga'ni ak'iga'ak'tak'ui'ya'ala'anga. End of translation.
Do you think I'll respond, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Rod.
Um, so, uh, Councillor Shepherd, um, just for, I guess, clarification. What section would you be referencing? Because in, in the, the bylaw itself and the territorial act, the driveway is not, uh, not identified as, uh, public, it's private. Um, so I, I'm just a little confused. We're in the bylaw that it might cause some confusion that, uh, it is stating that a person's driveway is public property.
Beginning of translation. Ta na katima'yi Shepherd naluna'ikanu'nu'na'ani tita'kakutigiyata taku'nu'ak'tatin'i atu'aga tini naluni'ilata'aka'unga'ri'utu'ha'anga'ni so'lu tukisitia'anga'ata hanu'aka'unga'ri'utu'au'nu'ak'ya'anga kikulima'nu' isu'tau'nu'ak'to' isu'tau'nu'ngi'tok'uni tamana tukitati'akanu'nu'akutlu'go. End of translation.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Of course, go ahead. Thank you. I, my issue, it, it's not that it's explicitly included. It's that the definition of publicly accessed is so vague that it could be interpreted to be included and to say that driveways are, are publicly accessed land. So I guess, you know, a firm definition of publicly accessed could deal with all of my issues with this. If you look at section three licensing, insurance and registration, no person shall operate, park or allow a motor vehicle upon any roadway or portion thereof and including any publicly accessed area without a properly displayed, a fixed and valid license plate. So depending on your interpretation of publicly accessed, you know, i- if we don't do our duty and define that right now, how can our enforcement officers define that themselves on a, on a day-to-day basis? Right? We need to have a definition of publicly accessed.
Beginning of translation. Ku'yanami'ta'ana tukisititia'akanu'uma'ak'anga so'lu utu'takata'akto' naluna'ilakta'sima'ngi tu'galua ilu'likulu'ya'ngi nikikulima'nu' isu'tau'nu'ngi titiyani tamana isu'maguyau'yu'nu'anga u'kalema'tu'ina'ak'tu'go ilu'nu'anga hanu'tu'ina'ak'ba' isu'tau'nu'ak'ya'ak'ta'ha'ina'li'ya'nu'na'aguyau'yu ilu'guyanga'ta' silata'ani tamana tukisina' tukisina'una'ku'iga'yanga taimana kitiyani na'sa'utu'li pingatua. Um, i'pigya'alu'go kinatu'ina'ingi kaya'ha'ingi ma nu'ak'titilugu'nu'ri nuna'siu'ti nuna'siu'ti tu'hami'nu'ri isu'tau'nu'atu'aruni kikulima'nu'nu'ak'anga'itu'ina'alu'nyu'ingi kaya'ksima'nu'ri takku' uh, s'is'ha'ngi tu'aruni tamana taimetu'li tita'ak'ta'mani'anga'nu'ak'ba' kinatu'ina'isu'tau'nu'ak'tu kikutu'ina'nu' isu'tau'nu'ngi'anga ta na ta'yu'isu'tanga tita'kakutigiyanga'ni ta'ga tukisititautia'ari'ak'tu'go hanu'larit tukikak'tila'anga ba'bu' tukisititia'anga'ata kikulima'ni pi'ula'ak'tu'mi'lu maliga'ala'ali ri uyuyu'ningi tukitati'ak'tu'mi'ta' pi'ali'ak'ta'anga'anga ta. End of translation.
Okay, um, sorry about that. I was, I was just thinking. Uh, Kim, I mean, I don't see the difference between how the, um, is, is the definition put in there. Is there, is there anything, is there any reason why you don't have a definition there?
Um, basically, in, in our, in regards to the public access portion. So there's no definition because the definition is so broad. You know, I would have to itemize each individual portion of it. So some of the definitions that I did locate, publicly accessed, it just defines any area that is reasonably accessible to the public where prohibition to the public is not part of it. So to give you an example, so a parking lot at North Mart, a parking lot at Ventures, a parking lot at the six-story or eight-story, uh, parking lots all throughout the city, here at City Hall, here at the Fire Hall, you know, these are all publicly accessible areas. So to drive in and park a vehicle with no insurance and no registration under the Traffic Safety Act, you are still on the highway, right? As it goes as far as to a person's private property, I can, I can assure you that through discretion, there's no officer gonna walk in on someone's private property and issue them a ticket because their valid, their insurance or their, their registration plate is expired. That, that is just too far reaching. Um, you know, so to, I, I can come up with a definition of publicly accessed. I can bring it back to council, but it is so broad. Basically, at the end of the day, public access is anywhere where the public is not prohibited from, from accessing. So, uh, you know, the causeway, you know, areas like that, uh, you know, it, it's publicly accessed. You know, parking lots are publicly accessed. Um, going into a garage, that's private property. Uh, it, it, it does have terms and conditions for public access, no different than, uh, you know, you look at the government of Nunavut, you go down to the Batman Correctional Center or you go to the, uh, Young Offenders Facility or the Women's Facility. That's private property, but there, there is an expectation that there could be public access if an individual wanted to access that property. So it'll be a bit challenging, but I, I can put something together for council.
Beginning of translation. Ta na takba' tukigi'ya'anga'ni naluna'ak'nu'atu'ina'ak'tu'iman'na kikutu'ine so'lu isu'nu'ngi ningi ningi ta na tukigi'ya'anga isu'ta'ak'sima'ngi mata bani atu'aga'anga pidju'tigilugu angi'ya'alu'nu'ngi tita'ak'tau'nu'ak'tu'ila'li'utiga'se'in so'lu kikutu'ine isupata'anga nu'ak'tak'biliman ni'vukpingi ni'vukbitu'anga'min uh, ilu'alu' silata'ani nuna'ri'pa'uyaku'ilu'akutiga'ta' silata'ani tamakua'taga kikutu'ina'unga isu'tau'nu'ngi mata tamana ingi kaya'ri'yu'ku pichu'ya'anga'ita atu'aga'ningi ata'ani tu'itso'lu takba' utu'tigiyau'yu'nu'ak'tu' kikutu'ina'unga'yu'ri kitiyani namminu'akutili' silata'ani tu'it um, ilu'guyau'yu'ilo so'lu pi'ua' pi'ua'ak'ata isu'isu'asutu'ina'anga'ata ilu'akutigiyanga'nu u'kata'ga tuniya'ya'ak'tu'nu'ri itu'lisima'ngi ma'una naluna'ikutigiyaya' nuna'siu'mo ime'ili'nu'ngi'anga pi'ua' pi'ua'ak'tu'iga'ak'ata taimeli'utu' tita'ak'ta'ni tutukit'anga'alu' sila' so'lu si'vitulu'ak'tu kikulima'nu' isu'tau'ak'tai ime'tu'va' so'lu isu'tau'yu'tai kikulima'nu' naluni'atu'ina'ami so'alu' mata so'lu tulak'tak'vi' kikutu'ina'nu' isu'tau'nu'yo'adla' kikutu'ina'nu' isu'tau'tu' namminu'akutili' takku' uh, sanabi'uyu' nuna'siu'ti'nu'ri kitiyani namminu'akutigiyanga'nu pigiyi'ya'anga'ta kikutu'ina'nu' isu'tau'nu'ak'ak'tu'kitau tamana so'lu tita'ak'ta'ari'ha'ya'anga'yu'na'li'ya'isu'tau'yu'ta'va' kikulima'nu naluni'alu' nuna'akutigiyanga'pi'ildlakta'anga'go ika'yu'ta'vik mak'utukuvik tamakua'taga isu'tau'yu'tai naluni'alu' iman'na'unku'nu'anga'ami so'alu' mata itu'mak'sak'ti'akutigiyu'nu'ak'tanga'atama'um. End of translation.
Thank you. I'm thinking something like really simple, like, uh, publicly accessed properties except for private dwellings. Agreed, Mr. Mayor.
Beginning of translation. Mayor u'kakata'akto' na'nak'tu'malu'gita'yu'sa'angi ime'ili'nu'nu'nyu' tita'kakutigiyati'ni atu'aga'ningi kikulima'nu' isu'tau'yu'tai kitiyani namminu'akutili'ni isu'tau'ngi'tu'ni angi'akata'akto' katima'yi Shepherd. End of translation.
That work, Rod?
That, that works. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Beginning of translation. Apiri'ak'tama'ru'anga'akata'akto' amana'kumestunilo. End of translation.
Thank you, uh, Councillor Shepherd. Did you have any more?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, you know, if that definition is in there excluding residential driveways like that, I'm content to continue. Thanks.
Beginning of translation. Nak'umir'anga'apiri'lduni' shepherd kanu'isalama'anga kanu'igingi'anga taimana tita'kak'ak'iga'ak'ta'ni namak'sak'to'. End of translation.
Uh, thank you. Councillor, uh, Stevenson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I feel like I should be brief because I know this meeting is taking long. I, I do wish maybe that this, uh, bylaw had been brought to some sort of committee. I know it's difficult because there's not really a committee that, but this is a very, there's a lot of things in this bylaw and it would be nice to have some time to talk about them. Rod, I have questions about number six, slow-moving vehicle. As far as I read it and I've read it about seven times, it seems like this will mean that no zoom booms are allowed on the road. Uh, but also maybe that no trailers that can't go the right speed. I'm just wondering if there should be a without permit kind of scenario in number six and a place where people can apply for a permit when they know that they need to, you know, and the permit could be something really simple, but when they know they need to transport equipment, that they say they're gonna transport it at a certain time, you know, off-peak hours and that they're moving it from A to B and, and the bylaw knows about it. Something like that because I feel like right now this is making very common practice completely illegal. That's question number one. I'm gonna go on with question number two and then you can speak. Uh, translation, are you okay with that? You want me to finish my question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Question number two is about number seven and passing and overtaking vehicles and number eight, passing and overtaking vehicles. I wonder why those two aren't somehow combined, uh, into one number. And I wonder, as far as I can read it, it would still be legal for drivers to pass, say, on the Apex Road where the posted speed is over thirty, if a vehicle were going under the speed limit and somebody felt like they wanted to pass them and it was safe and they followed all those safe, uh, parts of passing. Is that true? Am I reading that right, Rod? Those are my two questions for now. And, and one comment.
Beginning of translation. Ta na katima'yi Stevenson itu'malu'takata'ak'ta'ana na'sa'utu'li'ik'sek sukaituning ingi kavaktu'it u'kumaituti' so'lu atu'ya'mi'ingi kaya'ha'anga'anga'ta nuna'ri'pa'uyu'ta kitiyani, uh, pitu'ina'wi'ti'ningi kajutika'ingi kajutika'nu'ak'tu'it taimetu'mi', uh, nuna'siu'ti so'lu u'kumaituti'nu'atok'tau'tu' tamakua'ak'tau usi'usi'ya'uti' so'lu, um, takku' uh, tis'ama'li'it obaluni nuna'ku'utipau'ye't, um, napak'tu'it napayu'it. Taki'ningi ningi takku'anga'nu'ak'sau'tu' taimetu' nuna'siu'tipau'ye't pitak'ari'ha'ningi ningi na'sa'utu'li'ik'sek mi'apikutigiyanga'ha'anga taimetu'uma'nga suriga'alu'anga'alo amalu pichata' na'sa'utu'li'ik'sek seven amma na'sa'utu'li'ik'ek katigu'nu'ngi kalu'anga'ata takku' atau'ting'alu'tu'it apikutigiyanga'so'lu ha'angi'ak'ta'ri'ha'anga nuna'siu'ingi kaya'yu' so'lu thirty kilometers mi'ingi kapa'tan ne'ak'umu'unga'valde'ya'ha'anga'nu'ak'ak'ta'anga nuna'siu'ti taimana'itu'nya'anga apikutigiyanga' suriga'alu'anga'ta'ana. End of translation.
Thank you, Councillor Stevenson. Um, in relation to number six and slow-moving vehicles, um, I do appreciate that comment because I sat down and I thought about it. I, I had a schedule of times, uh, put together first of where certain vehicles couldn't be, uh, traveling on the roadway. No, we, we do have some congested traffic. Um, so I, I think the permit processing would be something for me to look into and would be a good idea. Um, also, I'm not sure what counsel feels about that if we, if we provide prescribed times that certain vehicles can, uh, can commute on the roadway. I know this was a big concern brought to my attention by the Public Works Department. Um, and also there were some residents who, who, uh, were complaining in regards to, you know, being stuck behind a vehicle from the four corners all the way to the Apex Quick Stop where these vehicles can barely make it to thirty kilometers per hour. So along the roadway, yes, it is thirty in some areas, but also it then goes into forty kilometers an hour. Um, so, uh, I will take those, uh, concerns and I will look into those as well, as well as the permitting process, um, to, to have companies apply for permits, uh, to have these vehicles on the roadway. Um, I could just touch quickly on the one thing, uh, you know, in, in relation to the heavy construction equipment, the metal tracks, those, those would require to be put on a separate trailer and moved around as well as other slow-moving vehicles. So, uh, does that answer your question, Councillor Stevenson?
Beginning of translation. Ta na taku'ila'ya'anga ne'ak'ari'ha'itu'malu'tak'ak'ama'ya'ala'anga u'kak'alu'go tak'tama'ulika'biu'ak'uma'ka'uyu'galua katima'ya'ala' katima'yu'tau'lu'alu'anga mata tamatu'minga'ri'lduti' kitiyani tamatu'mani'atari'iga'ka'va'ua ta na ki'ugata'ak'to' maliga'ala'ali ri ehkana'ya'tinga i'itu'malu'anga'mi'ta'w'kimi'ku'ak'tuni tamakuni'anga tamakua' nuna'siu'ti so'lu uh, salig'utu'it obaluni kak'ialit, um, obaluni usikata'utit ak'ta'utin nuna'ku'utit tis'ama'ri'uyu'halu'aku'hi'ha'anga'tu'ina'anga'yu'ti nuna'siu'ti takku'ak'tau, um, takuyu'anga'usi'su' tamakua'uyu'ngu'ata imma'ha'kimi'ku'alu'nu'ak'tu' pi'una'ukita'ak'ta'ri'ha'ya'anga'anga'ata amalu'tau ha'anga'kulu'ingi kati'ari'ha'ya'anga'anga'ata tamana'ak'tau itu'mak'sak'ti'akutigiyu'nu'anga kilo'ak'tu'mi'nu'uk'au'ya'yu'mi'ma'itu'malu'tak'ak'ta'anga'ata sanayu'ri'ya'ik'uni'ingi kanya'ya'ngi ningi'aka'unga'ri'utu'ak'ak'ina'sugu'nu' mata amalu ilan'i nuna'siu'tu'ina'ak'tu'u'kak'tak'tama'ngi mata ta'tama'ngi itu'malu'tigiyanga'ningi kilo'ak'tu'mi'it sitama'lingi atu'ya' pigya'ak'tu'gu'ne'ak'umu'unga'valde'ya'ila'ni'ingi kalisu'nu'anga'ta thirty kilometers mi'it sukaituti' so'lu tunu'ani'nu'anga'ata'anga'ta'ani'ingi kaya'yu' nuna'siu'tipau'ye't ta'ak'alu'tau'li'anga'ami' kitiyani ilan'i kufu'ri'kilometers mi'ak'tak'alu'ak'tu'it kitiyani tamana ha'angita'aku'nu'anga'anga'ningi'it itu'mak'sak'ti'akutaku'nu'ngi'anga'ningi Tamanachangiktau, NagaYangningi, Isimaksachyogutau, NagaYangningani, Akoi, Isimalu Tugiyangitatima, Titarangme, Artangin, Amma, Takunaklugu, Kanuglu, Echana Yaxti, Namminukutilit, Piunaukitara, ChanaKu, InikagunagaYangamanga, Nunasiutipauyangit, Pitjutigidluguit, Tamikuarunangmayangitao. End of translation.
With permission, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Stevenson.
Thank you, and thank you, Rod, for the answer. I would absolutely agree with the scheduling. I think that the city should come up with a schedule of where it's appropriate, but then not just a blanket, "Yet appropriate between eight and ten PM or anything like that," but instead that you need a permit, but you can only get permits during those times. So the city is regulating when that permit would be acceptable, and still companies are having to submit to you, "Yeah, we'll be moving this piece of equipment." I totally get the tracked vehicles, they should never be driving on our pavement. We have enough trouble with our pavement without those things coming and destroying our walkways. I think that was all. Oh. Yeah, no, I think that was it. Thank you.
Beginning of translation. Kuyennami, Angiratikitsiyapata, Amaligala, Liriyi, Gilyabun, Amma, Odlochakitau, Pata, Akiktau, Chatautit, Lo, Surlu, Tichinyayit, Tenmon, Takunaklugu, Akiktau, Chatauluguit, Kitiyani, Piunaukitara, Ngamitai, ManangiQayarunangningi, Akiktautia, Rotit, Kampanuyutit, Pichutuktuali, Tamakuninga, Sekumilachigunaga, Taumata, Aturriaku, Artitagal, Amalu, Aturriapitjutibut, Suraltau, Chidlisungomata, Asingini, PiJastachalimarialu, Kchuta, Obaluni, Isimalu Tugiyaksewa, Mitutitluguit, Tamatamani, Angiratigibarat, Akwakimakutautia, Lirigehaktuit. End of translation.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'll proceed with the second portion of that question from Councilor Stevenson.
Go ahead, Rod.
In relation to sections seven and eight, and to possibly combine, under the Traffic Safety Act, these two sections are separated, and there's a reason that they're separated. One permits the passing of... ...prohibitions are. So due to the act having both sections separated, that's why it separates the bylaw as well. So number seven provides you what criteria must be met to use the left-hand lane to pass. And then section eight deals more with the vehicles that overtake on the right-hand side of the road, so they pass you within an intersection, they pass you on the shoulder of the road, or they drive onto the curb or a walking trail, and to pass or overtake a vehicle. And also prohibitions as it relates to passing of school buses, whether on the right-hand side or the left-hand side, because you can't pass at any time signs or a combination of lights are activated. And also, drivers aren't permitted to overtake another vehicle within thirty meters of a crosswalk. So we see that quite a bit, where vehicles get overtaken, and it's less than thirty meters to a crosswalk, and, you know, could have someone in that crosswalk, views obstruction of the vehicle that is overtaking the other vehicle. So that's the reasoning behind why both sections are separated.
Okay. Beginning of translation. Nakomi, Katimay Stevenson, Kiuguniaraku, Pichata, AtikutigishauYanga, Amaku, Seven, Amalu, Eight, Naasautilik, Aturavatinin, Katigunamanga, Ta, Aturusharwalu, Amat, Imikunga, Titavut, Tamanna, Pitjutigidlugu, Taanasevenmin, Pitjutigiyanga, Nadliat, Kinatuina, Changirunakto, Chaminganit, Tunit, Tamakwalu, Changa, Changelu, Changirunagayangninganit, Ta, Tamakwaluta, Surlu, Galulaikutini, Nikitallagutini, Tamakuninga, Pitjutigidlugu, Ta, Taakut, Titaraxmatia, Artuit, Titaraxtangining, Amalu, Naasautilik Eight, Ta, Teeman, Na, Pitjutigimiyavut, Summan, Chalui, Malu, Pitacharriyahangmanga, Teeman, Titaraxmalu, Artuit, Piluahtamin, Nunasiutu, Kinatuina, Changirutu, Nunasiutipauya, Basit, Taakua, Nukhangakidluguit, Nukhanganingani, Niuyukagatau, Ma, Nutakaning, Ilinnyartining, NunaliPauYakta, Iluani, Nukatakbikta, Nahangiktau, Yahangito, Tamannatakba, Pitjutigiyanga, Taakwataga, Naasautilik Eight, Chalui, Man, IlulikuluYangin, Nukata, Nukarriyahangnomo, Summan, Pitjutiyuyit, Tamannatitaxmangman, Akutinun, Nunasiutu, Nun, Amalu, Piluahtamin, Kinatuina, Akutu, Inikayarriyahangi, Thirty Meters, Changirriyato, Nuni, Pitjutibikabikta, Na, Chalibaliyalutitlugu, Nukatakbimit, Chakbat, Teeman, Tagatukigiyangin, Imikunga, Titavut, Tokujinatierunakulugui. End of translation.
Thank you, Rod. I think, Mayor, if I could just continue. I think then at number eight, it just seems like it's not clear. Maybe in the title it should be passing and overtaking vehicles on the right, or number one, I of that, H should be made more clear? I'm not sure, but something's the matter with that, because it doesn't make it clear enough. I would, I think I was the mover of this, and I would like to make a motion to defer this to the next council meeting, and maybe give Rod some time to make some changes and come back. I feel like there's enough themes that have been brought up that I would prefer to have another second reading where we could discuss it in full. Mayor Bell, can you confirm that I was the mover, and could I make that motion to defer?
Anybody can make the motion to defer, for sure. I'm not sure. Amy or Tammy, do you know who was the mover of that, of this motion?
Brewster.
Sorry, Mayor, you're right, anyone can. So I would like to make a motion to defer, and I guess we should allow translation.
We should rescind the current motion first and then make a new motion to defer.
No, it's okay, we can just defer.
Brewster, I can with that motion?
Okay, so how do you want to proceed? Do you want to proceed by defeating this motion? Or just doing a new motion inside the motion, which would be the one that to proceed?
Yeah, I think Mayor's correct. We don't need to change any other motion, we just, I made a motion to defer, and that's it.
And we need a second, after interpretation.
And we need interpretation. Thank you, Mayor.
Beginning of translation. Kuyennami, Taan, Katimay Stevenson, Isimalu TukichauYanga, Naasautilik Eight, Suri, Taigus, Tani, Ta, Titarangi, Tukitatiyarehak, Tu, Surlu, Changirattan, Umataani, Chama, Inikayu, Nunasiuti, Nuka, Summan, Pitjutiumanga, Ta, Teemilingangninga, Nuni, Surlu, Nunasiuti, Changirattan, Tatalutimun, Imanangatitakchakpa, Akauwayakuiyok, Kitiyani, IluliguluYangin, Ochausiksachalimarialu, Ochausitachalimarialu, Rata, Rata, Tamanna, Nutaktau, Choyara, Atianunga, Katimalungamiguta, Nuttinga, Pa, Piunuxa, Piuynuxaralututugu, Amalu, Iminang, Piliritok, PigiaTutok, Chalau, Isimarata, Arttoni, Amalu Ta, Kiuyawata, Meiyumun, Taanago, ChaluiGiyamanga, Kitiyani, Kiogata, Artok, Tongiliriyanga, Brewster, Taatimang, PigiaKauyok, Kitiyani, Kiokau, Nunu, Meiyu, Kinatuina, Teeman, Ilasigiyaronangningani, Tamanna, Akiktau, Gia, Akikyaktau, Choluni, Pichuyibunga, Aktau, Chauyok, Nutaktau, ChigunagaYangamanga, Atian, Odlongun. End of translation.
Thank you, Tammy and/or Rod. Is that okay to do that, to do a motion within the motion?
So, Mayor Bell, this is Amy. I believe that once a motion is on the floor, that we need to do something with that motion. Mayor, Mayor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Brewster moved, and she could amend that motion as one option.
Who was the second, the secondder?
Counselor Shepherd was the second to the motion.
Okay, perfect. How about we do a friendly amendment to defer the motion instead of approve it?
I'm in support of secondder.
Deputy Mayor Brewster, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Beginning of translation. Ta, Teeman, Akikyaktau, Choluni, Ochal, Ochalak, La, Ochagata, Amma, Tukisigiyaro, Madluni, Lu, Akikyaraksa, Umanga, Pichuyibunga, Otamanatuna, Balau, Tidlugu, Kiuyawata, Emi, Tama, Kanukto, Charkarriyali, Kitiyani, Meiyu, Ochagata, MuYak, Akikyaktautu, Nakpa, Titaraxtangan, ChaluiGinnanu, Tamannatakba, Pichuyibunga, Otshurlu, Ngabaraktau, Choyau, Simanga, Lutu, Changiktau, Nuduni, Imanangatitakchakpa, Chalangayu. End of translation.
Perfect, thank you. So the motion is to defer to the next council meeting. And I'm going to call for a vote.
Pichuyibunga, Otakba, Emilingalutau, TaanapigiaTitau, ChauMan, Katimay, Tongiliriyanga, Mayor Brewster, Katimay Shepherd, Pigia, IP, ChauMan, Taanatakba, Balbigalala, Inikayularyangamun, Eight, Nine, Four, Katimalungamiguta, Kingodlongmi, Ngabaraktau, Cholugu, Amma, Apigalangalutu, Mayor, Chalui, Isimamanga, Ti, Namaksamanga, Ti, Changin, Agamanga, Ti, Luni. End of translation.
Mayor Bell?
Counselor Natoc, how do you vote? Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to be clear. So I've said that, I said I would rescind, but what I am saying is I'm willing to withdraw the motion, and because we haven't voted on it, all we need is for everybody to agree that the motion can be withdrawn. And then it's a separate...
What I just repeated to you was that...
...defer it to next.
Yes, but what I repeated to you is a friendly amendment, and you said okay.
Okay.
How about we just defeat this motion and start a new one, because it's getting messy for no reason?
If we defeat it, we can't bring it back.
The amendment will, if everyone's still agreeable to the amendment, then that is a clean way to proceed.
No, if you defeat it and make a new motion, it's a different thing altogether. But yes, I just want to make it clear, because the first thing was a friendly amendment to change from approval of the bylaw to a deferral of the bylaw. But then Deputy Mayor Brewster wanted to change it to...
That's clear, thank you.
So you're okay with the friendly amendment?
Yeah, to defer it.
Perfect, okay, so that's the vote we're voting on after interpretation.
Kuyennami, Ochalukita, Nukakutugu, Tamanna, ChaluiGiyamanga, Tongiliriyanga, Brewster, Tamanna, Ochagata, Chalau, Ngam, Piutautia, Maringa, Choluni, Nirwakluta, Kuyenakto, Nukiyani, Meiyu, Ochagata, Angman, Kiokau, Charamiu, Kiudluni, Surlu, Chaluitachangimman, Akikyakpa, Titaraxtangit, Kayusituinakuluta, Nirwakluta, Tamanna, Ngabaraktautu, Nanga, Cholutigun, Maligala, Liriyi, Nine, Four, Katimalungamiguta, KatimauTigitaningala, Aratigun, Changinangidlugu, Emiling, Emiligata, Angman, Chaluitachangimman, Kayusituinaknagata, Teeman, NochakauGami, Nirwala, Ngalukmi, Usitamanna, ChaluiGimanga, Ti, Akikyaksamalutidlugu, Titaraxtangan, Changinangidlugu, Kitiyani, Ngabarakalu, Katimanongun, Kingodlongun. End of translation.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote now. Counselor Natoc, how do you vote?
Yeah, Asibanga, Ngabarakalu, Ngabarakalu, Changiktyu, Suritek, TaTshining.
Yes or no?
She's in favor because she agrees that we need to discuss this more. End of translation.
It doesn't matter what, yeah, it doesn't matter what do you want, the rest of it. Counselor Shepherd, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Awah, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Flaherty, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Stevenson, how do you vote?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor, sorry, Counselor Kumalik, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Deputy Mayor Brewster, how do you vote?
In favor.
Perfect, thank you. That's been postponed until the next council meeting, deferred to the next council meeting. Interpretation?
Nakomi, Taakua, Nirwaktunau, Chata, Angat, Namaksaxtunau, Tuti, Ngabaraktau, Yu, Katimalungamiguta, KatimauTau, Ngala, Nuni, Angiktunau, Chata, Angat, Namaksaxutit, KatimauTiginyalunguyasi, Atian, Atian, Angin, Ochausikinatangitatimo, Meiyu. End of translation.
Moving into General Plan Amendment Bylaw Number Eight, Eight, Eight. Can I get a mover and a secondder for that?
Nunalirin, Akikyareli, Maligala, Eight, 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 Pigiatitau, Lomili, Amaitaktauluni. End of translation.
Stevenson moves.
Shepherd moves.
Counselor Stevenson moves, Counselor Shepherd second. Any comments, questions, concerns about General Plan Amendment Bylaw Number Eight, Eight, Eight?
Pigiatitayok, Stevenson, Katimay, Katimay Shepherd, IP, Ngam, IP, Yok, Apikutiyok, How You Say, Taatima, Naasautilik Eight, Eight, Eight. End of translation.
Seeing none, Counselor Awah, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Shepherd?
In favor.
Counselor Natoc?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Counselor Flaherty?
In favor.
Counselor Kumalik?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Stevenson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Brewster?
In favor, thank you.
Excellent and unanimous vote. Moving on to number three, General Plan Amendment Bylaw Number Eight, Eight, Nine. Can I get a mover and a secondder after interpretation, please?
Ta, Changirata, Artok, Eight, 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 Angiktunau, Kenongmata, Amalu, MananutisiyugukatimauTitini, Nunalirin, Maligala, Naasautilik Eight, Eight, Nine, Pigiatitau, Cholugu, Amalaipaktaulugu. End of translation.
Allam, Awah move.
Stevenson second. Counselor Awah move. Stevenson second. Any comments, questions, concerns to that motion?
Awah, Pigiatitayok, Stevenson, IP, Yok, Apikutiyok, How You Say, End of translation.
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Flaherty, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Kumalik?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Stevenson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Brewster?
In favor.
Counselor Natoc?
In favor.
Counselor Shepherd?
In favor.
And Counselor Awah?
In favor.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. Another unanimous vote. Moving on to four, which is the zoning amendment by law number Eight, Nine, Zero. Can I get a mover and a secondder after interpretation, please?
Ma, Nunalirin, Nyongmut, Pigialangalamuyu, IP, Chalulunilo, Naasautilik Eight, Nine, Zero, Amalu, Taan, Eight, Eight, Nine, Angiktau, Chakamant, KatimauTit, Pigiatitau, Lomili, IP, Chalulunie, Eight, Nine, Zero. End of translation.
Stevenson moves.
Deputy Mayor, second.
Deputy Mayor, sorry, Counselor Stevenson moves, Deputy Mayor, second. Any comments, questions, concerns about the motion? Hello? Sorry, my phone went dead. Was there anybody that wanted to comment on the motion?
Apikutiyok, How You Say, Pigiatitau, Umitano, End of translation.
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Awah, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Shepherd, how do you vote?
In favor.
Counselor Natoc?
I'm in favor.
In favor.
Counselor Flaherty?
In favor.
Counselor Kumalik?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Stevenson?
In favor.
And Deputy Mayor Brewster?
In favor.
Excellent, thank you, everyone. This is another unanimous vote. I have a question for the interpreter. Do you need a break?
No, I'm okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sure. So we can just keep, continue on? Do we need a motion for that, Amy?
We do. It's not necessarily a motion, it's an agreement from the members.
Stevenson agrees. Everyone else agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I may need, it's Counselor Shepherd, I may need to jump off soon. I do have some work I have to get done today, but I agree for now.
Understandable. So we'll move into nine A, Canada Emergency Response Benefit. Counselor Sheila Flaherty, bring this forward.
KatimauTit, Nutat, Nuttidonguyugutaku, Nunga, Tamanna, Ikayutigiyau, Batu, Ikkanadzau, Govamakuninut, Katimay Sheila Flaherty, Tusakayangat, Nutaning. End of translation.
I'll start, Mayor, that's okay. I brought this item up in my member's statement in the last city council meeting. I wanted council to discuss this item because I heard from, I was wondering myself, and I also heard from other residents about the concern that the Canada Emergency Response Benefit needs to take into account the cost of living in Ikaluit and in Nunuit. Right now, there's some criteria that qualifies you or disqualifies you. You have had to have made over a certain amount of income in 2019, and you also had to have your employment compromised because of COVID-19. You guys stop for translation?
Teeman, KatimauTigiyamalau, Gavamatochaku, Kinoya, Nitu, Nisakataming, Ikayutit, Tamanna, Isimalu Tugiyau, La, Ma, Singun, Amalu, Nammin, Uwannu, Isimalu Tugiyakatalau, Gavamatochaku, Ikayutigiyanga, Kitiyani, Kinoya, Liurri, Chalautu, Chagun, Twenty-Nineteen, Mi, Amalu Ta, Ma, Nukakitau, Gia, Haximandingi, IknaYanganing, Tamanna, Ikayutit, Taunangninganit, Teimetui, Ninganon. End of translation.
Thank you. I am also aware of some people who are employed on a casual basis, and there may also be people who have part-time employment. Uh, and, uh, there may also be people who have, uh, part-time employment. Um, and possibly the, the maximum amount of income cannot, current, currently it cannot exceed a thousand dollars in a four-week period. Uh, and, uh, the maximum amount, uh, of benefit is two thousand every four weeks. So, um, I, I would like, uh, council to, uh, adopt a motion, uh, to allow our mayor to, uh, write a letter to the government of Canada, possibly to the ministers responsible for this benefit. It would be the Ministers of Service Canada and the Minister of National Revenue. And I don't know how everybody else, uh, feels about this.
Beginning of translation. Kuyanami, kana, tuha ngani nganu, ikayuti, ikana yakti yu yu non, tukishinala oma, ikana yakaina luni, ikana yakaina kattuinakluni, ilisimakaina luni, kautalanikalwaluni, kisiyani, one thousand iliyu iluakat, ongataani, taquiliman, amalutau, ikayuti, tanatuniyagunakatanga, pinaswagosi, tamannu, akiktauluni, ikayuti, two thousand dollars. Tamannatau, katimayi non, pichuyibunga, omi, taquiyuyunga, kana me yugiyabut, titarunakulubu, kigaktu yu, gavama tukaku non, takwa, taxi yakti, angayuka nganon, amalutau, takwa, ikayuti tau, ratatuit, uh, gavama tukaku non, gavama, angayuka nganon, titarunakulubu, kanuita mangati, kisiyani, tukisi gomadlunga, end of translation.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Stevenson?
Uh, go ahead, yeah, go ahead Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Flaherty, I'm a little confused about what the letter, can you explain what you want the letter to say?
Beginning of translation, apari yumayunga, katimayi Stevenson, tanapari yumadluni, apari gumaatahtu, kanuita rachoying mana, pit, uchatia kanarunaruvit, katimayi Flaherty, end of translation.
Uh, if I may, Mayor, uh, Counselor Stevenson, uh, the letter, I don't have any draft wording, uh, exact draft wording, but that the mayor, uh, write to the ministers responsible for this, uh, what is commonly known as SERB, uh, and encourage them, encourage the program, the benefit program, to adjust, uh, the benefits and the limit of income to ref, to better reflect the, uh, cost of living in Nunavut.
Beginning of translation, tanatitarahtimalakta angitu, galwa maana, titakachutigiyang, minzor, piahtimanangitu, ni, kisiyani, tukisiti ti gunakatu, imanana, uchar, ucharatuahtu, me yutitarafo yanga, minister yu non, gavama tukaku, angayuka nganon, tamatsimenga, pilar yu non, ikayuti, tamanna, ayawrihuluta, maana, piyiksutau ni, bu, nunavummi, ikayusiariyau ni, ah, honi, zuli, ikayuti giyao yu, naamangitu, ma, nunavummi, u, okiortakto mi, akitu yu tau ninginon, amakigligi yanga, kinoya yiliwakatanga, ningin, naamangituni, tamana, akitsiyahtu, manuxta, men, tuha nganuxta, unakulubu, tamangunavummi, u, titaratahukuluni, tan, so, luhinu akuluni, me yugiyabut, gavama tukaku non, end of translation.
If I may, Mayor?
Go ahead Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification, Counselor Flaherty. Uh, I just, as a little added info for council, would say that ITK has been already dealing with the federal government quite intensely on the subject of both the SERB and the, the, the one that's for education for students as well, uh, and are continuing to advocate for the, the different, uh, cost of living in Nunavut. And that the federal government understands it, but is working on a program that is supposed to be pan-Canadian at the moment, uh, though they certainly understand that. I have no problem with asking our mayor to write a letter that highlights some issues in our community without question. I think he already has a relationship with those two ministers. Uh, I would be wary of being too critical of the federal government for those two programs as they're definitely working, uh, in some ways for Canadian citizens, including the Nunavut, our citizens of Nunavut.
Beginning of translation, tema, tamatumani, mayor, titarunakulubu, kanuyingitaraloa, titiha, titiha tuinakulutigut, ayawituinaga yaktunga, tamanna, ikayuti giyao waktu kanu, kigliharunangnuri yangan, kisiyani, ilagiyarabugunakatu nga, tusaratsamitau, tusakai gomadlunga, ilitsinu, katimayi uhatika, inuitapari kut, kanadamit, maana, ayawrihatanga, matagavama tukaku ni, tamanna, pilar yaridluni, kinoya yaktariyao waktu, ikayusiak, kikulimanu, tsiamachtitausimayu, ikana yalau simaniku, gutiakani, ama, akitu yu tau ningin, iliniamnilaridluni, iliniamnilaritutilu, tamanna, iliniamyumiksaanu, takwa, ekolisimangata, inuitapari kut, pilarisimatsiyahtutilu, tamanna, tamakuninga, isimalu tigiyaktini, kisiyani, kanuita ngitsiyahtunga, me yugiyabut, titarun, titarunakulubu, kisiyani, haui manangma, tapichat, tapichatsiyahtu, amalo, utjutsutya, lutakisiyani, ayawriwa, ayawrigalua lutakisiyani, piluaniluta, tamanna, kanadamitu, nunachatu, kanadamitu, ilu, tamani, ilagiyon, yehangningning, isimaksaxiro tihatsiya, lutu, end of translation.
Okay, um, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor Shepherd.
Counselor Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I view the bigger problem with this program right now is the action of the government of Nunavut to claw back income support, uh, for anyone receiving SERB. Those Nunavut who are legitimately receiving this federal benefit, who may also be on income assistance now, are having their income assistance clawed back. Additionally, it's known that there's a large number, or a number of people who perhaps illegitimately applied for SERB and are going to have to pay that money back, it appears, in the future. Uh, they stand the chance of significant hardship if income assistance is affected now and those funds have to be repaid in the future. Uh, the other territorial governments are not clawing back income assistance for those receiving SERB. Uh, and i- if, you know, action's gonna be taken, I, I would like to see it to encourage the government of Nunavut to revisit that decision.
Beginning of translation, tanakatimayi Shepherd, ilasigomadluni, isimalu tiginuxta yangan, ilanuxta ku yu yu, tamako, inuluruyit, inuluruyikut, ilagittuluruyikut, ikayusiariyao waktu, nunavummi, maana, utjitsihtiha talungming, mata, pir, piyaktau ku yu yu lutit, ikayusiak, tahtu mi, uguni, kinatuinak, gavama tukaku ni, pir tau, sikhatau, mata, inuluruyi, yuma siariyagay, yaktalawa, ningning, takwa, mikiliti tau, tuti, baluni, pita harunir, tuti, tamanna, takbay isimalu tiginuxta yangan, ama, misualui, tuksharaximayi, mi, u, mata, tuksharagay, hakuyi, natit, utjitsi tiga, halalungming, mata, gavama tukaku non, amalo, aton, sami, ilanutit, siwonit satinin, isimalu yagali, nunavu, gavama kun, tani, anitu, teko, temaitu, hatigiyabut, abitoksumayu, yu, temaitu, piyayvali, isimangin, mata, li, takwa, piyayititsiha tanganitu, inuluruyi, yuma siariyang, ningning, tan, tan, isimaksaxiro tigiyao yagay, hapalaya, nunavu, gavama kuninon, ayawribunga, tamatsimenga, end of translation.
Okay, um, is there any other comments, questions, concerns, or does somebody wanna make a motion, or I don't know what's going on?
Piahtitau yu, manu, kamangan, tukiyinahomi, isimalu tinutuni. Natak would like to comment.
Counselor Nuttuck, Nuttuck, go ahead.
Hmm. Tanaylan, uba, 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 tan, pimakwak, tammy, teko, halsakajamalaya, tan, isimala, unalaytuk, tamakununga, amla, tan, pila, ulalugo, two thousand, akirixarotliu, pikinahamago, piyayu, nginman, keptaxi man, tan, ilukam man, isimala, unalaytuk, tan, um, tan, duetya, asinlitayku, ikayuti, kanu, ngitu, galwa, tan, kenatahata, suguni, ilagint, kenatahata, mata, duetik, duetik, duetakam, tukshar, tuksharhatamata, tan, naamangitu, glanayato, akiratunata, tepata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment that, yes, I had heard about, uh, people applying for the purpose of merely applying to get the two thousand dollars and it's going to cause them hardship in the future. Uh, it's fine for other benefits, uh, we should just leave those other benefits alone. However, that we need to look at the problems that this, um, is going to cause and also the, uh, concerns that were raised by our fellow, um, councillor. But it's a real concern that we need to look at, uh, what, what the real issue is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, end of translation.
Thank you, Counselor Nuttuck. Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Tukak, tukakoma, batali.
Okay, without a motion on the floor, we're gonna have to move on to B, if.
I'll propose a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I propose that, uh, the motion that council, uh, look to Mayor Bell to, uh, to write a letter to the ministers responsible for this SERB to revisit this necessary and important benefit to Canadians and that it reflects, it better, sorry, and that it better reflects that our cost of living in Nunavut. Uh, and I don't know if we could have a, a second component to this, but I, I appreciated what Counselor Shepherd, uh, added that the mayor, um, uh, speak to the government of Nunavut to revisit, uh, decline back of, uh, income assistance at this time. Uh, people are going through a lot of hardships and, uh, this seems like it's counter, uh, it's, it's not helping people. Um, so it, it would be twofold, and I don't know if, if that's allowed.
Beginning of translation, kuyanami, mayor, kiyogomadlunga, pichuyibunga, omi, piahtitigomabunga, saki, saki gomabunga, katimayi, takwa, katimayi yu yu, tirisilutin, mayor Bell, mi, titarunakulubu, tamanna, uh, kigaktu yu non, katimayi yu yu, angayuka nganon, gavama tukaku ni, tamanna, kimekutautiya kanarunakulubu, ikayusiak, tamanga, nunavumon, kinoya, akitu yu tau, ni, rihatatahanga, ningning, inu, miri, inugunangnuri yabu, kautama, akiti, bu, akitu yu tau, nuxta, ningin, nunavumon, akitsiyahtu, manuxta, unakulubu, opigilugulu, tamanna, katimayi Shepherd, ilasikau, ma, me yu mon, tan, takunakatau kanarunakulubu, gavama tukaku, ilan, ma, ma, gavama, nunavu, gavama kogiyangan, ningning, kikutuinai, ikay, aturohatanga, ningning, ningning, kimekutia, kimekutia, yagamayu tau, ikayusiak, taarihatatahanga, pir tau, hataku yu, ngilutit, end of translation.
Um, okay, do we have a second there for that motion? Uh, Counselor Shepherd will second, I'd like to propose a slight amendment.
Shepherd ipyu, akigayalalu, ni, titiakatana.
Go ahead, Counselor Shepherd. I, I would amend it, I would like to see it amended to have a letter written to ITK indicating the city's support for their lobbying efforts on this front. Um, they can use our support potentially as leverage in, in their, in their work with, uh, the federal government. Uh, and secondly, to, just to clarify, a letter to the government of Nunavut as well, uh, relating to the clawing back of income assistance of SERB. If that's okay with the mover.
Tanago, akigayaku yanga, titiakatanga, uh, ikayutu, unakulutu, inu, uh, inuitapari kanadamit, takwa, ayawrihatanga, matagavama tukaku ni, akitolti, yagamningning, tamanga, nunavumon, yu yu, okiortakto, inu, nachutigiyang, inu, ayawri, mata, inuitapari kut, tamanna, akigayagala, hapan, aturo, yangago, ekoliyutigini, akitiluni, gavama tukaku non, temanata, ilagiyarunakata, end of translation.
If I may, Mayor, I, I would, I would, uh, support that amendment.
Katimayi Flaherty, kanuita ngikubi, mayor, angitara, temana, end of translation.
So it would, it would be helpful for, uh, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, me please.
It would be helpful if we could clarify, um, this motion for the minutes and, uh, so staff can assist with the letter.
If I may, Mr. Mayor? Absolutely, Counselor Shepherd. So, I'd say, motion to request them, to instruct the mayor, request the mayor, whichever is the appropriate term, to write a letter to ITK indicating our support for their work with the government of Canada in relation to SERB benefits and the cost of living in Nunavut, as well as a letter to the government of Nunavut expressing concern relating to the clawing back of income support in relation to SERB.
I would add to the first, uh, Counselor Shepherd, if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Flaherty.
Uh, just to add to, uh, Counselor Shepherd, thank you for, uh, relaying that, uh, the motion again, uh, clearly, uh, to support, uh, ITK's work with the government of Canada's SERB benefits and that, uh, we all are concerned that the, uh, SERB need to take into account our cost of living.
Beginning of translation, tanakatimayi Shepherd, akigayakiman, yu, ucharunakatahtu, apari yaku, mata, akigayakiman, nuxta, kulubu, pichuyibunga, omi, e, mi, apakikau, magitak, takwa, takwa, kiu, ratatuit, piahtitibu, takwa, tiliuribu, me yugiyaktini, titarunakulubu, inuitapari kut non, ikayutuit, kudlutigut, ubago, ikayutuit, lutayla, uh, tan, pilar, pilarisimanginon, ayawri lutit, gavama tukaku ni, tamanna, ikayusiak, kikulimanu, ngayuk, uh, nuwaktuana, tamanna, ikayuti harunangani, ikana yarunut, gasaunanginon, tamanna, asinginon, lupilarisimanginon, ayawri bugut, ikayutuit, ya, gu, inuitapari kut ni, pichata, titarunakulutu, nunavu, gavama kuninon, inuluruyi, kattahtuit, tamanna, pir tau, ratakungilugui, ikayusiak, taari, bata nginning, amalo, pichata, ilasikatahtu, katimayi Flaherty, tamanna, ilagiyatunakatu,